Good evening, everybody. This is a regular meeting of the Wareham School Committee. It is August 21st, 2025, and we will begin with -- we will also announce that Jamie Wixton is doing an audio recording of this meeting, and WCTV is doing -- is televising the meeting as well. And we will now do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members are present, and we will go, even though it says for number four, public participation, we will go to public participation. But I don't see anybody here who would like to address the committee, so we'll move on to good news. Does anybody on the committee have some good news? Or superintendent, do you have any good news? Yes, you do.
I have some good news. So fall sports have started, and we're right up against the new school year, which begins Monday for staff. And we have our convocation at 8:30 on Monday morning, and of course, school committee is invited if you'd like to come, say hello to the staff. We had our admin meeting on Monday and Tuesday. We had new teachers yesterday and today, a very excited group of new teachers. The buildings look great, thanks to the custodians. Our technology is all updated, thanks to our tech department. We have a new rooftop unit at the high school, fire alarm system upgraded at the middle school. A lot of work was done, and we're ready to go. Couple more hires to make, but we're looking forward to a good, a good school year.
And the roof on the middle school is done, done, right?
Yeah, rooftop, yes. In the middle school, yes, done, done.
Yeah.
I think we're still -- yes. I mean, there's money, stuff to just iron out, but...
But from the practical point of no leaks?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's great.
Yeah, it is, it is good. No more leaks.
All right. Anybody else with some good news?
Uh-uh.
No? Okay. Moving right along, we have on the agenda a workshop to talk about the superintendent's search, but I'm going to push that one slot and go to our spring sports report with Ed Rodericks. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening. Good evening. Okay. The spring sports were one of the better ones we've had in a long, long time. Baseball, softball, boys tennis, girls tennis, all qualified. We had like three teams win the, the conference. And I, since I've been here, we haven't seen anything like that, so I was very, very pleased. Everything went well. We've had some outstanding accomplishments by individuals, too. We had the MVP of the, of the conference in Sienna Cave in track. Ingrid Bedoin was the runner of the year. There was, I don't know what the difference was, one was the runner, one was the MVP. Chris Kay was baseball coach of the year in the Mayflower, and Rudy was coach of the year in the Boston Globe. So Rudy Cadena, very happy. GPA was another 91-1. There's one thing down here, I don't see, the girls tennis, they're in the state tournament, too, for some reason.
They were 1-1.
1-1. It wasn't, that's what I thought, and I'm not sure whether I missed that, but, you know, I'm very, very, very pleased. Everything's gone well. Now, we just, just started the fall. Everything's going well, so some, an upgrade on, an update on field hockey. Field hockey's been a struggle, but Bourne's brought a kid, one or two over, and now we're going to Mashpee Call me, which is a half hour away, but they're willing to come here every day in a van. The coach drives a van, their coach, bring them here. They have six girls, which would bring us to 16, 17 girls, so we can have field hockey. And actually, we might play one or two home games there because they have artificial turf.
Oh.
So, so that's what we're, you know, we're lucky that that was brought up. He had talked to me about it. I said, "Well, we're not going to go there for practice every day." That's crazy. But, so they wanted to do it, and I said, "Okay." So now we should have, all the other teams are doing well as far as the numbers go and everything, and football's over 40 kids. We haven't had that, and I
Wow.
I can't remember when we've had 40 kids.
Like little tiger numbers, that's great.
Yeah, so it is good. I'm not, you know, doesn't mean necessarily turn into victories, but at least we have a lot of kids. A lot of, that's, the only sport that was a struggle is field hockey. All the other sports are doing well with the numbers, and, and it's been good. Very, very happy with everything, so that's it. Do you have any questions on anything?
Did the baseball team ever get to play on the renovated field, or was it work not done?
Yeah. And that field is literally like, if you close your eyes, you walk in and you look, just look at the grass, you think you're at Fenway Park. I mean, it's unbelievable. And, you know, it was a nice, nice experience. Now, as you said that, I would like to see if we could get, we have other Wareham teams, you know, they played there once. We have like eighth grade teams, seventh grade teams, and, you know, if they could just play on that field once, I mean, they got, we had a team come in, older kids came in for like a little exhibition game, and they were a little upset with that. And I'm like, "What do you mean?" I mean, I'm like, "What are we supposed to do?" I mean, I know they paid for most of the renovations, but that field was the town. We want to see, I mean, it's good publicity for younger kids to go play there. You're not going to play on a much better field than that. I can't imagine this. I mean, I've been to a lot of high school fields, it's none as nice as the one we have right now. I mean, that is beautiful.
But it is the school's field, correct?
Yes, right.
I know it's a, I know it's a unique relationship, and we're grateful to the Gateman for everything.
It is, they put a ridiculous amount of money into it and all that, and I guess I didn't tell them that they were going to go on and play one Sunday. Oh, geez, whatever, so...
Was it during the Gateman season?
Right before it started.
Before it started?
Right, it was just about to start. And I'm like, you know, I mean, and I, it's, it's a beautiful field, and my point is, kids from Wareham should be able to, not just the high school kids, other kids once in a while play there, you know? I think it's a good selling point for, for kids that love baseball for the school, you know?
Didn't we used to, we, we used to do like with renting out the fields to other teams for exhibitions?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know Legion used to play there, but I don't even know how that, if that exists much anymore.
I think I saw them playing there this summer.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, they were allowed to play. But at that point, and, you know, there's like another league, I guess it's called AAU, but there's a team called the Gateway, they're out of the Wareham area. Not all the kids are from Wareham on the team, but a lot of kids are, and I would love to see them play, not all the time, but a game or two there would be a really nice experience, you know? Especially if we could put the scoreboard on and everything. Scoreboard is absolutely beautiful, everything. I mean, the field is, I was in shock at how, how nice it was when I first looked at it, you know?
Did you have that discussion with the Gateman about these teams playing?
Yeah, a little bit. I just, after that happened, I was going to, and then I said, "I'm not, I'm not going to say anything." But that could be something that we could talk about.
Who gave you grief, just out of curiosity? Do you want a name? Or even the title?
Tom Gray was there, but the other guy, it was another guy, he was more adamant than him. I'm not sure.
That our kids not play on it?
Yeah, because he didn't, well, because what I didn't do is I didn't ask them or send something to them. And I'm like, well, actually, I wasn't there. I wasn't there, so I'm just telling you when it happened.
Okay. Third hand, okay.
They wanted to throw them off the field right in the middle of the game and all this stuff, and, and I'm like, all right, so that's...
But they didn't, correct? Okay.
Let them finish it out. And then, but it was tough after that, so. But no, I mean, that is a beautiful facility that I'd like to see more Wareham teams in general use it, you know?
So two, anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
I just had one question. So you started out by saying that it was such a great season, which is so good to hear, but why do you think that's the case?
Well...
Is it the conference change? Is that...
That absolutely helps, yeah. I mean, you know, we're just, this is where we are right now, and to me, you know, it's more important, I mean, a state championship's a far and few between, no matter what conference you're in. So for us, to just be able to compete on a regular basis. Now, girls softball has a whole team back. They got a chance next year, I'm not saying they will, they have a chance to possibly win, win the whole thing. So, but that's rare. So most of the teams, we're just trying to get them to have competitiveness. Winning, I don't, and honestly, it's not even about winning or losing, it's about being competitive. If we lose, not losing nine to nothing, you know, maybe five to, five to three or whatever, okay? It's a competitive game. South Coast Conference honestly was, and, and if you look at the South Coast Conference, it's a Division III conference or higher, and I, and if you rate them as probably, it might be the top Division III conference in Massachusetts. If you look at all the teams that have done well out of that league in the state tournament in Division III, we're not Division III, you know, so it's always a, was, was a little bit tough for us. Now, once in a while, we'd have good teams that did well, but in general, it wasn't great. This is more on our level in a lot of respects. I mean, there's some deficiencies with the league and, you know, but, but I think in general, the games are much more competitive. And also, we don't have as many games, so now I can go schedule, outside games are competitive with our teams. For example, my team is going to be really strong, like softball's going to be really strong next year, so I'm going to try to go out and play, I don't know, like maybe, I'm just throwing a team out there, New Bedford, Volk, or somewhere, whatever, the top, top teams for that year. And then, you know, that's my goal as, as an AD, to try to get teams that we're competitive with, not necessarily winning and losing, but, but at least the games are good, you know, and, and...
And the power rankings encourage you to do that.
Yeah, but see, and, you see, they make a big deal about the power rankings, and the only time I think the power rankings should come into play is if you have a team that's going to compete for the state championship. Otherwise, what's the point? I mean, you're, you're about trying to be competitive and win. So, you know, like boys basketball is independent, so we're very conscious of the power rankings. They got a chance to do extremely well, so we go out and play, like they're playing Brockton next year, New Bedford next year, Bishop Henricken next year. We do it on purpose so that their power rankings will be higher, because it will have an effect on them for the state tournament. Most of our teams aren't that, and I'm going to try to do that with softball next year. All our other teams will play, play a normal schedule, as well, you know, trying to be competitive and win games.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
With, with having, with field hockey, having, you know, the Bourne and the Mashpee kids, which, which I saw that they were looking for, you know, kids, and I was really glad that they were able to pull that team together. I know that when we had hockey, you know, we, it was very prominently, you know, Wareham Carver, and we made sure to call it Wareham Carver. Is there sort of like, how is the team going to be structured so that it's equitable for the other towns' kids that are playing for us as well, or with us?
Well, we'll have the majority of the kids, so
Right.
It's going to be Wareham slash, you know, Bourne, Mashpee, I guess, you know? But it'll probably just say Wareham for the most part, but it's Wareham, Mashpee, Bourne. And I don't even know how long we'll do this. We're going to do this for next year. For this year, we're going to try to do it a two-year deal, but we'll see how it goes. But, you know, both, they're trying to survive, they have, they, they had, this is what happens, you have signups. Everybody thinks signups means, they had 16 kids sign up, well, they end up with six. You know, signups, if you get 50% of the kids to sign up, you're lucky. So he called me, and, and we, I didn't think it would happen, but it did. He said, "No, we have the money for it, so we want to do it, and they're going to take a van every day after school, come here for practice. On away games, they're going to take their van and go to the away game, and if we're going down to Cape, we'll meet them," or whatever it may be. And so, and they're going to, they're going to have, one of their coaches is going to come onboard, too. Our coach will be the head coach, and this other coach will be another coach that we'll have, which will, which will be nice. We'll see, we're going to, I mean, I just want it to survive. The girls that we have, they just want to play, you know, they just want to play, and so hopefully, this will materialize, and it'll be, it'll be okay. MIA still has to approve it and all that stuff, so...
Thank you.
Three really quick questions. One is, I saw on the hires and personnel appointments, Megan Cashner resi...
Megan Cashner resigns effective today, or yesterday, and...
That was, it said volleyball.
He was talking, um, he's talking about the other, when she did assistant basketball.
She did assistant basketball.
Just a...
No, she just did, is that on, I don't...
That was, he's, he's speaking to her resignation for basketball, but I know what you're talking about is something.
Is she still coaching?
No.
She's not coaching soccer?
No.
That's a loss.
No, as effective as of yesterday, yeah.
Ooh.
And so, yeah, I mean, I'm not, that's, you know, she, it's, it's, she resigned, and it's her personal reason, so I'm not going to, obviously.
Hey, yeah.
So, I mean, that's her decision, and yeah, it is a loss. She doesn't, you know, she, she gets kids to play, especially soccer, she got a lot of those kids to play then.
Yeah.
We didn't have very many. And, you know, you make decisions in life, and that's her decision, and...
Okay, and I will respect it, okay. I just wanted to verify, because it didn't say soccer on the thing that I was looking at.
Well, it might have said girls basketball. She was a JV coach. I don't know if it said that, but that's what she, she resigned, but that, that was a couple of months ago, I think she resigned, a month or so ago, she resigned from that. And she just, it's done with coaching, let's put it that way.
Okay. Second question is, from a budget perspective, for the whole year, were we, did we have any problems?
No, I don't think so, Kristin.
No.
No. I refer to her all the time. I bug her all the time. I don't know if it gets bugged by me, but, but, no, 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 I don't, we try to stay, you know, I try to stay at a decent, pretty similar to what I do the year before, and it's, it's worked out okay, you know? The biggest new thing is, Kristin's been a big help with, is this hourly pay, which we started doing, and we're still trying to get the town to always agree with it, it's just, they have to put money up front, so the officials get paid right away. So for example, they do a basketball game, if we have hourly pay, they do a game on Friday, they're paid by Saturday. Whereas in the past, it had to go through me, to my secretary, Kristin, to this person, so by the time they got paid, it was sometimes five or six weeks later. Well, that doesn't cut it very well with a lot of officials, so they like this new program. So, but we have to have money in advance, and we've, they did it last year, and we're hopefully confident they're going to do it again this year. Makes a big difference.
Yeah, it says girls volleyball coach on the sheet that we were given.
That was mine type, though, I just looked it up.
No worries. And this year, we're still not going to have student fees, correct?
No fees.
Thank you.
But I was told not to have it, so I think that's great, I really do. Hopefully, we can continue to do that.
Yeah, I, I agree completely. Okay. Anybody have anything else for Ed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
All right.
Good luck to your...
Yeah, I know, it's a big game, so, series is tied, if they win, move on, so. All right, thank you. Have a nice night, everybody.
You, too. All right. The superintendent's search committee scheduled a workshop with a member of MASK, which we have chosen to do the search. Unfortunately, that person had a personal vehicular incident, which he was not injured in, but it prevented him from being here tonight. But there are other things that the search committee would like to inform the committee and the public about, so I will turn it over to Kevin.
So, one of the things we have to do eventually is decide on who we want to make up our search committee. And I can give you what we did last time in terms of the positions that were on there. We had two school committee members that were the subcommittee search committee, we had one principal, one special education parent, one regular education parent, we had one town official representative, it was the town administrator last time, we had a student, we had an elementary teacher, a middle school teacher, a high school teacher, and one person from central office. So I would just look for input...
Did we get a community member at large?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did have one community member at large as well.
I just feel like...
Thanks, yeah. No, yeah, that was an oversight, we had that last year at time, too.
So you were, you were on that committee last time, too. Do you see any reason to change the makeup of the committee?
I mean, I think overall, it worked out. We had good representation from the major constituents. I know there's been some requests from some town officials that we should be on it, or they should be on it. I think that's for us to decide who we want to have on it, how many, and you want to keep the committee a manageable size. You can't, I think we had 12 people last time. I don't know if odd numbers, something you need or don't need, but I wouldn't go much bigger than that.
I think an odd number was what was suggested, and if we're not at an odd number, I think if, even if it's like, say, two committee, community at large, if that's the case, that way, at least all the bodies are representative, and that way, there's two community members. If there's, if it's an even number without...
Mm-hmm.
I think that might help to round out the committee.
But is there any constituency that we think is missing from that list? And we did put it out to the public, I mean, I know we searched for community members at large, we put something out to parents, and if we had multiple people put in, and we had to decide who we were appointing as a group, I believe we voted on that in open session.
I think the constituencies are pretty well covered. Can you think of a constituency, Matt, that, with whom, with which you interact on a regular basis that is not represented?
Finance committee?
Well, if we have, if we have a town, if we have the town administrator, they...
But if it's not, like, say, if it's a person from the select board as a town official, then maybe having a finance committee person would be...
As a former finance committee, I would never say it was a bad idea.
I know budget's your favorite.
No, but if we did have the town administrator like you had last time, I think that would...
Kind of covers all bases, if we have him.
He does cover all bases, right. But if for some reason, if I...
If he's not available.
If for some reason he's not available, I think April is right, it would be great to grab someone from the finance committee, and they have some fine people on their, on their committee, and I guess is, they would be happy to join.
And you have the, the union president is, or a union rep?
We don't have that at the moment.
Last year, Deanna serves as the elementary teacher and the union rep as one.
Right, so, again, we can, but do we just add, or do we take something off if we did that?
I would not take anything off. I think, I think it would be, I mean, I know, I think the size, no more than like, I think if we're at, like, at least roughly around 15, I think that seems like a manageable size, if that's where it's at or close to.
And that's true, I would look to MASK also, to give us what they normally recommend in general, just going forward.
Basically, around 13 to 15 last year from what I, our last time.
I think Matt's point is well taken, and, and Jamie's memory is good. She served two functions, but I think an overture to them is probably a good idea, and maybe she'll want to do it again. Is she still in the elementary? It doesn't really matter where she is.
She's at both. She, she works in middle and elementary.
Okay. Just something to keep in mind.
Okay. All right. So we will put that out officially to public, once we know the dates that we're going to have these meetings, because it will happen this fall, when we get this underway.
Yep.
And when is Mr. Costello scheduled to come back?
September 4th.
September 4th, okay. So we can finalize things then, hopefully. I think that's it for me at this time.
Okay. Any questions for the search committee? Just so everybody remembers, Joyce is also working with Kevin on the committee. Kristin, the finance report.
Yes.
I think you outdid yourself with the number of sheets that we had to look over.
Well, thank you. So tonight, you have May, June, and July, so that contributes to the number of sheets. In, so the month of May and June, we were closing out the year, and I'll just go through, in May, we ended up with the budget 83% expended, and by the end of June, we ended up just under, it says 100%, but that's just rounding, so we ended up spending all but $120,000 of, of the budget. So I did have some, some charts.
By the way, that 120, that went to the town, correct?
Yes, that closes out to the general fund at the end of the year.
That's, that's a requirement, just so everybody understands that, and I'm sure they were grateful to get $120,000.
That we then get to ask for back at town meetings.
And then some, yes.
So what I did was, to summarize June, I thought it would be helpful just to do some, a quick summary with charts of, just to show how we spent, how we spent our funds. And I organized it based on how Des, how we report to DESI. I put a little cover sheet with some explanation, so that hopefully, that made, that, that made sense to everyone, without putting too many words on, on the chart, so that, you know, I'm a firm believer, when you see everything, you see nothing, so. So that's, that's what I did, and I'm just going to go through, I'll go through June, and certainly, if you have any questions on May, I'll, I'll certainly take them, but I think June really wraps it up. So how is...
Are you coming back to that lovely set of charts? Because I did have a quick question about the total expenditures separated by regular and special ed.
Yes, that, that's what I'm going to go through now, is, is the charts, yes. So the charts are organized based on how we, how we report to DESI, so that it's uniform, consistent, and hopefully, clear. And so it's, it's divided into categories, administration, which is school committee, superintendent, business office, some district-wide technology, instruction, which is the lion share, all instruction, pupil services, which is generally transportation and health services, and athletics, and other student activities, operations and maintenance, that includes utilities and heating, and also custodians, and any building and equipment repairs, benefits and fixed charges. For us here, it's just the insurance that we pay for the food service employees and our, our copy machine leases for the most part. Community services, we don't have any expenditures for that. I, I don't, I don't really see that happening in a lot of, in a lot of districts. $7,000 is acquisition, improvement, and replacement of fixed assets. We didn't, we didn't budget for or expend any funds in that. Debt, retirement and service, we don't have any of that. You'd see that most, more likely in a regional school. And then finally, $9,000, the programs with other schools, that's what we pay to others, out of district schools, and also to Bristol Aggie for Wareham students to attend those schools. So going through, so that's how the charts are organized. So the first chart I did is I took our total expenditures, and I said, "How much of it was salaries versus how much was expense?" And by expense, it would be contract services, supplies, other things like memberships, and then salaries is all salaries, and so it's, it's as you would have expected it, that the, the big portion of a school department's budget is in salaries.
Just to be clear, if someone's an employee, then that's considered a salary?
Correct.
If they're not an employee, they're under contract, do they still get included in that line item?
No, they get included in the expense, so they are considered a contract service employee, so, and so then, so there are, there may be contractors such as school psychologist...
Exactly.
Some, it's, there's not a lot, but sometimes...
There isn't a lot, that was my question.
There's not a lot, no.
Okay.
Sometimes you would see some related service providers, like OTs, PTs, the psychologists, and sometimes you see that where it's difficult to find, you know, you just don't have enough need for a, a full-time person, and you just need some additional services, so that's what you would see there. But they would be classified in that, in that expense part, they're not part of the salaries. And then the second slide, the second chart, I thought it would be interesting, because we do talk an awful lot about regular day versus special education, and what percentage[1661.23] And what percentage of our budget, so you can see of what we spent in twenty twenty-five. We spent more on regular education, but we did spend a significant amount on special education. So twelve million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand of the total was spent on special ed.
So, so that's my question. If I, I, what I did was I added those two numbers together and then divided by the, the twelve million plus. And it came out to thirty-seven percent. I actually expected it to be larger because we've got thirty percent, round number, of our students are special ed. How do you handle allocations, meaning your salary, Matt's salary, et cetera? Do you, do you spread that across those two categories? Or are they all sitting in one, in regular ed?
Sitting in regular ed because it's, it's, it's undistributed or like it's regular day or special education. So the, the salaries and expenses that get classified for that is strictly a special education teacher.
Direct expenses.
Right, the special educate, the director of special education, supplies for special education, out of district tuition, any.
So the twenty-one million is direct and indirect, and the twelve million is only direct. So my calculation of thirty-seven percent was not, in fact, very enlightening. Got it. You answered my question. But go ahead, Joyce.
Can I just ask a follow-up? Because I did the same exact calculation and, and compared the thirty-seven to the thirty percent of the population. So someday, I would just love to know of the twelve million, how that breaks down into transportation, out of district. Someday when you have an extra minute, Kristin.
I can certainly, that, that, that is actually easy enough.
Oh, all right, okay.
Thank you. So then on the next slide, what I did is I took all of the expenditures and showed the pie chart by, by the Desi function code. And this is salaries and expenses, so everything that was expended. So you can see, you know, the most of it was in instruction. We spent twenty-three, almost twenty-four million in instruction, classified as instruction. And that, that you would, that you would expect. Our total expenditures for, I have that here, the total expenditures. For, so it was twenty-three million of all, all expended. The total budget was thirty-four million and we left one hundred and twenty thousand. So then the next highest was, I'm looking at it, and it looks like it's the four, four thousand accounts, which is util, which is utilities, maintenance, and facility, all the facilities. So in there you have, of course, your electric and your heat. And I thought it would be interesting, much like Joyce's question, to say, well, how much of that is utilities? Because we do talk a lot about utilities. So we spent eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars on utilities. And that's electric. Anything but heat is, is considered utility from Desi. In regard to heat, we spent two hundred and, just under two hundred and fifty thousand, heating the buildings. So that's a lot of, that's, that's a big amount of money. The three thousand accounts, and I did put this in the cover sheet, what I did was, most of it is transportation. And because we have a combination of our own in-house transportation and outsourcing for our, our runs to the out of districts. I thought it would be, you know, more interesting to break out transportation so that we could see how much transportation is, is costing. So this, and again, these are just funds from the, the local budget that the town, that comes from the town. We have funds from other sources, but this, we're just talking about the local budget. So from the local budget, we expended two million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand on transportation. That includes driver salaries, any parts for the buses, fuel, and also the contracted out of district runs and that. And that's, that's, that's what's driving it. In the other three thousand accounts, like I said, it is athletics, it is health services. So the school nurses are classified there, the, the school resource officers classified there, any student activities. Like if you have, you know, the intramural coordinators, they're all, they're all in that, the coaches, they're all in that, in that part. So we spent one point, one million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand on the other three thousand accounts, student activities. A small sport, a portion was spent on the fixed assets, the benefits and fixed assets. And that's mostly, like I said, our copy leases, our posters machine lease, and the insurance that we pay for the food service employees. That was, I believe, two hundred and forty-three thousand. Another, another large part, of course, is the out of district tuitions. And those can be very costly. Those can run anywhere from about seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year now, upwards of four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars plus. We do have a few really expensive tuitions that we're facing in, in twenty twenty-six. And finally, in the last category, the one thousand account, that's the administration. So it's the school committee expenses, the legal services, the superintendent's office, the business and finance office, and some district-wide technology. So that's just a picture of, of how our, our budget was spent. And it's really, there's really isn't any surprises. It's always, you know, instruction, it's tuition, it's transportation, and utilities that you really need to keep a real good eye on. Finally, what I did is I further took that and I said, okay, if we just separate out salaries, how do we spend the salaries? And, you know, the, the biggest share of the salaries is the instruction. Twenty-three million, one hundred and three thousand was spent on instructional salaries. That's teachers, that's paras, that's, you know, related service providers. So that, of course, you would expect to see that. In the, the, the next highest is in our facilities and maintenance. So that would be our custodians in our facilities department, which includes a facilities director, the plumber, and the HVAC technician. We also spent about one million, one million, three hundred thousand on transportation salaries. So we have, you know, a fleet of drivers and monitors and the director and clerical workers. So you see that. The other three thousand accounts is primarily the school nurses for salaries. And then there's the, in the five thousand, there's just a sliver, that's our crossing guard. And then the one thousand, again, that would be the superintendent's office, I think the district-wide technology people, and, and my office as well. So that just is a snapshot of our salaries. And finally, I did the same chart for the non-salary expenditures. And that's broken out, you know, a lot, the, the pieces each, there's a lot more equality to the pieces. The biggest expenditure is the nine thousand accounts, which is our tuition, our out of district tuition. So we spent two million, three hundred and seventeen thousand on out of district tuitions last year. And then we also spent one million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand in the operations and maintenance. And the biggest part of that was heat and utilities was together was one, one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Approximately sixty-eight thousand was spent on grounds. And then approximately seventy-nine thousand was spent on custodial operations. And the rest was just general building maintenance and equipment repair. In the transportation department, there were one million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand on non-salary expenditures. I can tell you that the biggest part of that was just the out of district vendors that we, that we send out for, to go to our out of district placements. And also to, to any like in-town or any homeless and foster transportation. So that's a big chunk of our budget. And then there's some, some small accounts. Again, the, the copier lease is under the, where you see the five thousand accounts, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, that's the copier lease. Student accident insurance, which is a small portion, and the food service insurance. And then finally, we have expenditures for three hundred and three thousand for our school resource officer nurses. Special ed medical services, contract services for special ed students, and athletics and other. And then there's a smaller amount on instruction, and that's instructional materials. Eight hundred and forty-two thousand was spent on, you know, the, any instructional materials and equipment. So that's just kind of a, a quick, you know, summary of how our budget was spent. I thought it would be helpful just to see it all laid out like that. And certainly, again, certainly takes questions if there are, if there are any questions.
Questions? So I noticed in your line item for the June thirtieth, for the full year, that teachers slash nurses, substitutes. The high school and the middle school, high school in particular, went way over budget. You corrected it, so, I don't mean corrected in the sense that you adjusted the budget so that it didn't create a problem. And the middle, and the elementary school was significantly under budget. Should I, in the end, it was relatively speaking, if you added all of it together, it wasn't, frankly, all that much over. But does that reflect absenteeism within the, within the three schools? Or is it something else that, that would cause that, that variation from the budget?
Well, I think it certainly could reflect, it does reflect absenteeism, but it could be that there was some longer-term absences. There may have been some leave of absences.
I mean, it was a big number.
But it also could mean that, you know, I needed to do a better job with the starting balance predicting.
Whoa, 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 timeout. I think you're taking on a responsibility that shouldn't be yours. Meaning the principals should be saying, this is what I need to cover projected absences, for whatever reason, in my school and budget accordingly. How would you know that better than the principals?
I, I usually just go based on, I look at the historical.
But they approve it, right?
They don't know, the principals don't budget for salaries. So when the principals give us their budget, it's their expenditures, it's their supplies and things like that. So they're not, they're telling us, okay, we, we have the, this, we have these positions that we want to keep. Or we have these positions that we'd like to add. But they don't necessarily get, they don't, they don't budget for the salary portion of it as much as they budget for the expense. So I think.
I think the superintendent has something he'd like to say.
I was, I was just going to say to, you can't predict out the leaves of, leave of absences that might come up because somebody gets injured or sick or something like that.
I understand.
It may have hit the high, I'd have to go back and look, but it may have hit the high school harder last year than the other schools. And certainly that's something a principal could never foresee.
And that you also could have some unfilled positions that you're calling in subs for as well. So that could, that could have, you know, that's something that you wouldn't necessarily be able to, to predict or know. So it's, it's one of the harder, I don't know if I would say it's one of the harder things to budget. But it's one of the harder things to be more accurate with because there's so many factors outside of your, outside of your control.
Understood. Okay, I'm, I'm good. Everybody else good? Oh, sorry, April.
So to that point of, of how many positions that were either not filled due to retirement or there were layoffs or what have you towards the end of the year budgetarily? How many of those positions do you anticipate us going forward needing subs for, for the district? That would, that, those would be, I would think, things that, positions that weren't filled or that we're trying to hire for that you would think that that would be something you could potentially project a sub being necessary for.
So I, I think by unfilled positions, I guess what I, what I should have said is position, say someone resigns mid-year. And then it takes us three or four weeks, five weeks, six weeks to fill it. So there's a period of time that it's not, it's, it's unfilled. So, but then we hire someone. So in that time, right.
But like going into the school year, do you have any of those positions where there, I know you would mention you're still hiring and things of that nature. So how many of those positions, school starts next week, are there still unfilled that we could project the need for a sub for currently?
Are you asking how many we have that we might have? A couple, I think, at this point.
Spread out amongst the schools or?
Yeah, yeah, I might, is it?
I just counted it, seven.
Seven, okay, more than a couple. Yeah. We, we have, you know, unfortunately, we have some people who find another job in another district and let us know the, you know, the week before school starts. And so we're kind of scrambling to, to fill, you know, someone to, that'll hold the position until we can hire someone to fill the position.
Anything else for Kristin? Okay, thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Reporter, the superintendent.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so you have the superintendent's newsletter. First up is bill and payroll warrants approval?
Some vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes? No? Okay. My vote is no, four, one, zero. Okay, next.
Okay, obsolete furniture, obsolete furniture. You have received the list. I can assure you that we have salvaged the parts that can be taken from all of these items. And anything that is still usable, we look for any, you know, way we can donate it or find, find a home for it where it can be used. For the most part, though, all of these items are no longer usable. And after we've salvaged the parts from them, they need to be disposed of. We also, there is one that was not on your list that I wanted to add. This is from our, our kitchen. It's a fifteen-year-old commercial reach-in refrigerator that was working during the school year. Started having problems a couple of months ago. And a, a service technician came in and looked at it and said it's not worth trying to repair it because it would end up costing more than it would to purchase a new one. So we would like to.
Where is that, where is that currently located?
That is. That's at the high school.
Okay.
So that's, I asked that you vote these obsolete.
We have a traditional question.
Yeah, my same question. I'll ask anytime. Any funds that we do recoup for either recycling or like if we do end up scrapping? Or I just would like at some point a report of any of the obsolete stuff, of anything we are able to get back for whatever we do.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Other than that, motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Joyce. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Four, zero, excuse me, four, one, zero.
Okay, thank you. So my goals, I'll give you an update on my goals. First of all, the preschool at the high school, it's been a lot of, a lot of effort, a lot of obstacles. But we, I'm feeling good about it now. They're actually clearing the, or have already cleared out where the playground is going to be. You might have noticed that outside my office, part of the fence is coming down.
I was going to ask about that.
Yeah, we're going to reuse that as the fence around the preschool playground. We have the, tomorrow, we have them coming in to cut the concrete and our plumber's going to tie in the, into the sewer line that runs under the classroom. And as soon as we can get that cut, get it tied in, filled in, our plumber then can put in all the, the bathroom fixtures and pieces. The paint, the classroom's going to be painted this weekend. And so we're shooting for September eighth. We do have a backup plan. If that doesn't happen, hopefully we will not need that backup plan. We have eight students and fifteen slots that hopefully we can get filled. I'm confident that we will be able to fill them. I think this is going to be a great program. We have, I think, about seventeen students, I'd have to.
That's what it says.
Don't quote me on that. That are going to be part of the program. This is going to be great for our preschool kids. This is going to be great for our high school kids. I'm very excited about this program and hopefully it will be a smooth trip to September eighth. But if it isn't, we'll make adjustments. So that's goal one. Goal two is the EMT class. That's in place, all set to go. We have seventeen students registered for the class and that will begin this school year. The, the annex, which we're now calling McDuffie Education Center. Thanks to the town, we had two hundred thousand dollars to do some work over there. The floors have been waxed. We moved furniture in. We're actually going to reuse some teacher desks from Deacon School that'll go in there. We're going to do some painting in the basement. The tech has all been, is in the process of being upgraded, the hi-fi, hi-fi, wifi. New phones, cameras, swipes are all going to be in place. That program starts September second. All the tech might not be completed, but enough of it will be completed where we can open the program in the McDuffie building. And finally is the, the goal around the correlation between performance rating and student growth. We did a lot of work last year looking at survey and evaluation data with the evaluation subcommittee. And we developed criteria around performance ratings. We looked at student achievement data. And the arbitration is tomorrow. That'll help inform the data that will be included going forward. Yes, sir.
Okay, on goal two, so that is, uh, sounds like a really good program. Are the individual students responsible for any of the money for this?
No, nope.
Okay, so. I know we need to like assess how that whole thing works out, probably what, the whole, did it take a year to do that or, or the first semester or?
It's, it's about, I, I think it's an entire year. It's like a hundred and fifty hours. I'd have to go back to my notes. But it, it would take up an entire year. The students have to be eighteen in order to take the EMT test. So we're, we're making sure we align it with. to be 18 in order to take the EMT test, so we're, we're making sure we align it with when the students are 17 and that they finish up, they're 18 years old, or at least soon to be 18. So, you know, it's still fresh in their minds when they take the EMT exam, and we're also working with the, um, with emergency services here in Wareham for the students to do some...
I was just wondering if down the line, that if you would open that up to like non-stud, you know, people who have already matriculated or whatever, you know?
Uh-huh.
Like add, add, add a cost to them for, for the training.
Uh-huh. We haven't looked at that, certainly potentially something.
But I, I'm just thinking of like ways to...
Right.
Generate revenue kind of thing.
Right, right. We're very, um, we're very fortunate that, I think there's a cap on, they wanted to keep it at 15, but it's at 17. Um, I'm happy that we were able to, to fill as much as we have, so, but certainly if numbers were to drop, it would be something that we could consider.
So you're optimistic about September 8th for the preschool?
I'm optimistic, um...
The major, major impediments have disappeared, have been overcome.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Keeping my fingers crossed.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, Joyce?
Um, so the students, you said that you have eight students so far.
Yeah.
And you'll be offering them to the students on the waitlist. Have you had families say they want to wait for a spot at the elementary?
I believe that is the, yeah, that they would prefer to be at the elementary. Now, um, I, you know, and I understand, they might have some...
I know, I do too, yeah.
And, um, but I'm confident once we get this program going that there's gonna be people asking to get into that program. I think it's gonna be really...
It's hard because they, I'm sorry, they can't even visit yet.
That's right.
Show them what you're offering them.
Exactly, to see what the program will look like, right.
Okay.
She says open to the children of staff.
Yeah, that's our plan, is staff. Now, i- it's a very tight window of when, it's four-year-olds, um, so if you have a four-year-old, yes, that we, we're gonna open it up where we can have a staff member have their child in the program.
So...
It has to be four, it couldn't be five, if their birthday doesn't align with our start of...
There might be some overlap.
Okay.
Three, if, in five, I'd need one of the preschool directors to give you, you know, but it would be, yeah, in that window.
So, how, so assuming these are not special education students, their peers, these, would the staff be paying as, the same as any parent in?
Yeah.
Okay, and, but you would not require the, the staff person to be living in Wareham?
No.
Do you require that now?
Uh, I'm sorry.
For a peer, for a peer?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so...
So all of these people we would require, all of the parents, the families, we would require to be families in Wareham, except for if it was a staff member.
That was my question. So they get waived, that requirement is waived if they're a staff member?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Which then, I mean, most likely you would, I, I know that there are staff members that have their children enrolled in the districts that they teach in because transportation, convenience, things of that nature, and that district, I assume it would fall under the school choice rule, should they want to continue to enroll in Wareham Public Schools?
That's correct, yeah.
It's a nice benefit, yeah, if we can, yeah, if we have the room. Okay, anything else on your goals?
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions about its goals?
Did, did you wanna talk about your fourth goal? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I started talking about your, you, did you finish talking?
I did finish.
You did finish, I was hoping, okay, I must have missed.
Okay, so...
I was mesmerized.
The arbitration.
I was mesmerized.
The, the whole thing is, but to some extent, the whole thing is stalled until this arbitration.
That's correct.
Okay, and that's scheduled for when?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, and who's participating in it?
Uh, myself, Tracy Kotai.
Okay, that's it?
Our attorney.
That's it?
Well, and then...
The other side, I'm not worried about the other side.
And that's it, yeah.
That's it, so three members?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I have a question, um, and it was stimulated by the obsolete equipment and then the, the technology issues related to getting the, what are we calling it, the McDuffie Center set up?
Okay.
Do, do people like, like Phil, do they report to Tracy now?
Yes.
That was my question, okay, so she's, and, so the, the people that are in the schools, serving the individual schools, they have a dotted line relationship to the principal and a solid line to Tracy, or the reverse? That wasn't supposed to be a difficult question.
I would, um...
I got last Dr. Russo.
I would say yes, that's how I would, I would, I would characterize it. Solid to Tracy, dotted to principal.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
So is essentially Tracy's position, even the title is different, essentially Assistant Superintendent, what was formerly the Assistant Superintendent position?
She has those responsibilities, yeah.
That's what I was...
Yeah, along with technology.
Although technology was a new one.
So was Bonilla Sorsa and the Assistant Superintendent's positions merged into one position to become what she is now?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, everybody good on the goals?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, I don't think, that was just an update. Okay, report of the school committee. So the last time we met, um, we, uh, talked about the Unit C Memorandum of Agreement. We have been informed that Unit C, which is one of the pieces of the WEA, has approved the Memorandum of Understanding. Um, I will now open it up for any discussion, but, and also a motion to approve if anybody is so inclined.
Motion to approve for vote.
Okay, um, does, do I, can I have a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second. Uh, no, we'll now open it up for discussion where people can say anything they'd like to about this memorandum of agreement with Unit C of the WEA. Would anybody like to, yes?
So first, I just wanna say thank you to the members of the school committee who did the negotiating, and thank you to the members of the union. Um, I know that is a time-consuming process, and thank you to the members of Unit C who work every day in our schools with our students. Um, I have no opposition to any of the language, any of the, um, salary changes, um, being made in the district, made in the contract. Um, my only opposition to it is the two-year clause. Um, you know, traditionally, our contracts are three years, and in this case, um, you know, the points were made that it would be more efficient, that we'd see some dollar savings by going to a two-year contract instead of a three-year contract, and, you know, I've, I've listened, I've listened to the union, I've listened to my fellow school committee members who did the negotiating, but I'm still not convinced that going to a two-year versus a three-year contract is, is right at this point. Um, so for that reason, and that reason only, again, I have no, um, no opposition to any of the language or the wage, and I know that that requires a lot of work. I know that Kristen and Dr. Dandridge did a lot of work to get to those numbers. It's only because of the, the two-year term of the contract that I will not be able to support it tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Kevin?
Yeah, I would just add that I think this contract is moving in the right direction in recognizing pares and giving them, uh, some, uh, a higher percentage raise than maybe we have in the past, and I agree with that. Again, like Joyce, my only concern is with the duration. I think we'll be right back negotiating again at the end of next year. Um, I wanna pay our pares, and I just wanna pay them for three years, not two, and so hopefully we can achieve that going forward.
I just, I concur with Kevin and Joyce on that, what they've been saying. Thank you. Uh, April, anything you'd like to say?
Um, it was a very, um, I don't wanna say embattled negotiation, there was a lot of back and forth. It is a lot of people that have put their blood, sweat, and tears into the negotiation, Jeff and I, um, and, you know, the Matt and Kristen, um, and the other members of the negotiating committee on both sides did, there was a lot of back and forth, and there was a lot of work done, so I just wanna make sure that that's recognized. Negotiating with a large group that is so hands-on with our kids is never easy. Um, and I think Jeff and I bargained it in good faith and did the best that we could to try to accommodate everything that was asked, reasonably asked, um, and to, um, try to make it as, as fair as we could, so that's all I have to say about it.
Um, I understand my fellow, um, committee members' concerns. I also agree with what April said. In the beginning, I felt that the two-year agreement was probably a mistake. In the end, I decided it seemed to be much more important to them than to me, and therefore I decided to defer to their feelings about it. Um, I guess you could say I made a, a leap of faith that in two years I won't regret it, um, but that's, um, that's in essence, I also agree with Joyce that I think the contract itself, although expensive for the district, is, has certainly been earned by the value of our Unit C members and what they bring to the education of our children, and this is an, this is a very odd stipulation in the agreement, meaning that the length of the term, for us to come to such a significant disagreement. Um, but I will be voting for it. I, I believe it's the right decision, but I respect my fellow committee members' feelings that it's the wrong decision. So, with that, unless anybody has any other, uh, things they'd like to say, I will ask for a vote. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
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 The vote is two, three, zero. Um, we have one other, uh, item on the, and superintendent, would you please, uh, inform that the, uh, WEA, um, that of the vote, and that we would like to gather again to talk about next steps?
Yes, sir.
Um, we have a mask, um, conference annually, um, and, uh, part of the responsibilities of the district is to appoint a delegate, uh, to the mask, uh, assembly, which occurs, generally speaking, in the first week of November.
It's the 12th through the 15th?
Oh, it's late this year.
No, 14th, 12th through the 14th.
12th through the 14th, okay, thank you. Um, so one of the things we need to decide, fortunately, we have a member who's extremely enthusiastic about performing this duty, and candidly, but sincerely, I appreciate your enthusiasm associated with it. So, um, I will take a nomination to be the delegate for the Wareham School Committee, uh, for the mask, uh, assembly.
So I will nominate April Rossi to be the delegate for the Wareham School Committee.
[laughing]
Thank you, Roger. Um, we have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Five, zero, zero. Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Uh, I think we're supposed to, we're supposed to have an alternate. Uh, I will take a motion for an alternate.
Um, well, we should make sure that it's someone who will be attending the conference. If, I know that there was one time, one time in all of the years I've been on the school committee that I had to tap in my delegate, and I was so sad that I had to use the alternate, so, um, but anyway, I, I mean, I know Jeff has, as a life member, is very familiar with the, um, with the delegation and the role of, um, MASC and their responsibility, so I would nominate Jeff as the alternate, if he's willing.
As long as you promise to...
Oh, I'm not missing it. This is, I, it's the highlight of my year. You guys don't, I get so in char, like jazzed up about the delegation.
All right, we have a motion to...
I will second that.
Um, sure, someone will second it, yes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Five, zero, zero. Um, okay, uh, I have two other brief, very brief things. Uh, one is, I wanted to thank Roger for sending to the committee, um, the report of the Commission on Anti-Semitism, uh, within the state school districts. Uh, I was not aware of it, um, and, uh, I have read it in depth, and I have asked the superintendent to have the principals be prepared to talk about, um, the issue of bias and discrimination, not just anti-Semitism, but the whole area of bias and discrimination, and it may fall into other categories like harassment, et cetera. Um, I think it's a critical subject. Once again, I appreciate the fact that you sent it to us. Um, I have been reminded by our ever-present, uh, person who wants us to follow the rules, that in the future, and this applies to all of us, if you would send it to Jamie for distribution to the full committee, that would be great.
Okay.
Uh, but otherwise...
I, I wasn't sure.
No, no, that's not a criticism. I probably would have done the same thing when I was new to the committee. Um, but it is an interesting report, and I look forward to, to what the principals might have to say about the environment that exists in our schools. Would you like to say something?
Uh...
Feel free.
Not really, not really about that, but about, uh, this is a different subject, but that, uh, I guess it's Constitution Day is in early September.
September 17th.
And I was wondering if, uh, do, do, do we as a group pass out anything, like constitutions, little, you know, those little pocket constitutions to the students?
I think, I think some of the history classes and social studies do di, different things about it. We don't do a, a district-wide distribution of the constitution, uh, contra, constitution, sorry.
It just seems to me like, you know, the high school kids, you know, they'll, they'll be the ones that are the next voters that, that we need to get on, on, uh...
Yes, they are. Yeah, and, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a much debated document these days. Okay, um, the other thing I wanted to quickly say is, I was, um, really curious about this information passed out to us at the last, I think it was the last meeting, from the poetry club, and I wanted to thank, um, the students in the poetry club and their advisor. Um, I thought it was pretty powerful stuff, um, and I read it, um, and, um, well, let's just say it was powerful. Um, it was, um, it was, first, some of those kids were in eighth grade, others were in 10th grade, um, and, uh, I think they are, they are using it as a vehicle for expressing their feelings, and I think that's always, that's always a good thing for adolescents, and I want, I want that, the club and, uh, and the advisor to know that I, in particular, and maybe the committee in general, are very appreciative of having this distribution, and wish them continued success in, in creating, um, this poetry. I, my guess is they're, they're all quite inspired by that Harvard poet from a few years back, um, who made such a, such an impression, but some of them show, show some ability that maybe they'll continue it in college and afterwards, and, and they will, uh, provide evidence of that as to the school committee in the future as well. So, thank you. Uh, does anybody have any other business before the committee?
So, as you all know, I'm the Secretary Treasurer of Division 7 for MASC, and on Monday at 6:00 PM via Zoom, we are hosting a virtual roundtable discussion, um, where people can, um, ask questions or sort of do a, um, refresher on charting the course. So anyone that has taken charting the course, it's sort of taking what you've learned in how to kind of be a successful committee member and applying that in real time with scenarios that you may not have thought would have come up, what we are and are not able to do and discuss, and what our roles are as school committee members. Um, there was an email sent out to every member of MASC. You can register, um, right from your email, and hopefully, um, it will also, I think, then be turned into, um, like a, a ut, or like a document that will be sent out, like a live link that you can look at after, so if you are unable to attend live, but I will be, um... But I will be manning the chat for any questions that will be coming through for that, if anyone is interested or if you guys know other school committee members in other areas that might be newer to the districts and have questions, so.
Great, thank you. Jamie, has Roger been scheduled for charting the course?
Have you scheduled yourself? If not, I can help you. Do you need help with that?
It's all new, all new members, MASC, what's the correct term, requires it?
It's a requirement, yeah.
It's a requirement as being, as for, through MASC, it's not a state requirement, I don't think, but it's a, a MASC requirement for whatever authority that has.
I believe it is a state requirement that school committee members through MASC have to take charting the course, but.
It's a good idea.
There's no, I, I don't think there's, that we're aware of, there's no formal repercussion of not taking it.
Exactly, the enforcement mechanism doesn't exist.
But it gives you the understanding of, of open meeting law, anything that may or may not violate the open meeting law, Robert's Rules of Order, all of the things that we have to do as a committee, what our roles and responsibilities are and what we can and cannot have fall under our purview. So it is really helpful as a new committee member.
Work with Jamie to schedule yourself.
Okay.
Or, I was just gonna make a suggestion that April helped Roger.
I can do that too.
Well, I wasn't gonna add that to her, her responsibilities, but either one is fine.
Jamie's probably better at registering than I am, to be honest, but I can help you navigate any questions you might have.
Okay, does anybody have anything else that they would bring, like to bring before the committee? All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anybody not wanna go home? Okay, we are adjourned.
Wonderful kickoff to the school year.